Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving. Welcome to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If you would stand with us, please, before we have our prayer and our pledge, I've asked Commissioner Joshua James to make a few comments regarding Veterans Day.
Standing. I wanted to take a minute to say that this week was Veterans Day. And while a lot of veterans enjoyed a meal, you know, a free meal locally at some of our restaurants, and a lot of us did our due diligence of saying how much we support and thank our veterans. Twenty-two a day. Needs to be remembered. Twenty-two veterans a day commit suicide. That's the national statistic. And one of these members of our commission here actually helped a veteran without even realizing it. It really matters. These veterans go out there, do their service, and come home, and the one big thing that they're missing is that sense of brotherhood, that camaraderie. So when you come back and you scatter to the wind, so to speak, and you don't have that connection, that instant connection, it's hard to find that. So from this veteran, I wanted to thank that commissioner, because that commissioner, in this case, saved that veteran from a downward spiral and really changed the day and the week. So, Mr. Chairman? Early in the morning on Monday. So while we take our pledge and our prayer, if we can keep in mind that twenty-two veterans a day, anything we can do, any, anything, might turn that moment and keep that number down to twenty-two, twenty-one, or less. Thank you.
Commissioner Chaplain Romell McMurray.
Let us pray. Most gracious and sovereign God, we stand before you this evening to tell you thank you. Father, you have been so, so good to us all. I ask that you continue to draw us closer to you every single day. I ask for a special prayer and a healing for one of our fellow commissioners, Carl Boyd. I ask that you go to the place that's needed the most and restore whatever is needed. You've done it before, and we know that you'll do it again, for we know that you are a healer. You allowed the blind to see. You allowed the sick to be healed, and you have all the power in your hands. I ask that you be with us tonight in this meeting. Grant us the wisdom to carry forth your work through us. I thank you for giving us the opportunities to do good to others every single day. Give us the endurance to serve, the strength to always be kind, and the courage to pray bold prayers for others. As I close, let us be reminded of this season of Thanksgiving that we're in and for the holiday that's upon us, for we know that every day is a day of Thanksgiving. Let us be more grateful in our daily walk with you and instill more gratitude in our attitudes. Be with those who has lost a loved one over the past year and those that may be struggling without them, for we know that you said that you will never leave us nor forsake us. I ask that you continue to protect the United States of America and watch over those that watches over us and protects us all, the military, our first responders, and many others. We thank you, Lord, for our cities, Rutherford County, and the great state of Tennessee. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Time we'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the robe. Lisa?
Commissioner Oliver?
Present.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Rather?
Here.
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Bush?
Commissioner B?
Here.
names?
Here.
Here.
Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Boyd? Paul Johnson?
Here.
Irvin?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd? Chairman Phillips?
Present.
McAdoo?
Here.
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 Yeah.
Everett Coral, nineteen present.
Thank you, Lisa. This time we'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading of our October seventeenth meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes, among others, and find them to be appropriate and in order. My motion is to commence with the reading of the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the October seventeenth meeting minutes. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Senate in opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item E, getting to know, also introduce our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. If you do not sit on public safety or budget, you may not have gotten an opportunity to know our Director of Paws, Michael Gregory, and hopefully tonight that you'll get to know a little bit more of him and hopefully the public also. But Michael Gregory's passion for animals started in an early age with his first show heifer. From there, he participated in many four-H events, including public speaking, demonstrations, and showing cattle, pigs, and sheep. He began working at Shelbyville's Veterinary Clinic in high school and remained there until he graduated from MTSU with a degree in animal science. In two thousand and four, he was hired by Bedford County with the task of planning and implementing of their first animal control program, all in less than two months. In two thousand and eleven, Michael joined Rutherford County Paws and became a certified animal welfare administrator in two thousand and seventeen. Outside of work, Michael has been married with his wife, Amy, for eighteen years. They have three children, ages eleven, nine, and eight, who keep him busy with sports practices and events. He and his family are members of the Trinity Baptist Church in Shelbyville, where he teaches adult Sunday School class. He also enjoys football, roll tide, like I'm rolling my eyes.
Well, if it's a good one, Commissioner Gooch tells you good luck. Of course, have to have a little fun. If he's introducing you, he always likes to bring a little bit of laughter to everything, so I appreciate that. Tonight, I wanted to talk briefly about our department, and first, we're going to start with just a brief video that kind of goes back to the nineteen forties to tell about animal control in Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro and whatnot, and bring us up to date, and I appreciate one of our interns preparing this video for us.
Welcome to Paws, formerly known as Rutherford County's Rabies Control. Our organization has a long history of positive improvements. It took time and dedication to achieve where we are today, upholding our current values and mission as we always strive to improve for our community. Years ago, dating back to nineteen forty-three, the rising number of stray dogs led to multiple issues with the spread of rabies being the biggest concern. Over the years, the problem was difficult to eliminate because the county didn't have a proper facility to hold strays. The city and county took several steps to improve the situation, with one being the pound's establishment was placed at the city barn in nineteen forty-seven. With many actions to change the dog situation over the years, the pound's procedures did not meet our current standards and regulations as an animal control welfare shelter, as their mission was to eliminate the rabies dilemma. One of the biggest concepts we desired to eliminate were the drop boxes, which were part of a plan to control the county's rabies issue. Cats and dogs could be placed by owners next to each other in a drop box located in the front area of the pound during the sixties. Their thinking was that people would be more willing to leave unwanted pets at an unmanned area. It was cruel to animals and fortunately eliminated. As the years went on, the shelter had many other changes, including the location. It had four previous sites before arriving to our location today on John R. Rice Boulevard. The previous site was on Haley Road, and it was in horrible conditions. It was too small, infested with roaches, and had an impractical floor plan. It only had twenty-three cat condos and twenty-four dog kennels. The cages did not have enough space for the animals, as they did not meet the recommended minimum standard. They were also very hard to maintain. There was no air exchange, and it was very difficult to control odors. With no AC where the animal cages were, it was hard on the animals and staff with the summer temperatures reaching a hundred and five degrees. It also made the animals more prone to disease. They had to house dogs and cats in the same room, which was not supposed to be allowed. There were so many improvements for the animals, staff, and organization when the shelter was moved from Haley Road to John R. Rice Boulevard. Paws is a fifteen thousand square foot facility that contains a total of eighty-seven dog kennels and thirty-two cat condos. We also have a pet resource desk. We are able to schedule surrenders now instead of placing animals in a drop box. This resource provides owners that are surrendering their pets with pertinent information and resources so that they can make the most informed decision. We have separate rooms for stray cats and dogs, a vet area, a separate dog and cat adoption space, and efficient services for our community. You can find on our website at paws.rutherfordcountytn.gov. Services such as a free spay and neuter program for Rutherford County residents only, low vaccine costs, microchipping, abuse cruelty investigation, and more. Not only do we improve the facility, but we also strive to improve the knowledge of our staff. Now, all of Paws employees are fear-free certified. This certificate shows that employees know how to handle animals in a safe way for both pets and employees. It educates them to look for signs of fear, anxiety, and stress. It is an extensive course that makes a difference for pets and staff. The organization has progressed with major improvements over the years. It took a long time to get where we are today. With the help of the community and leaders in place, we were able to accomplish our main goal, improve the lives of the community and the animals of the county.
As you can see, we've come a long way since nineteen forty-seven, when that first was established, and it's hard to believe that next month, we will have been in the facility in John Rice for twenty years. The next slide, I'd like to take everything and...
Welcome to Paws.
The next slide, I'd be remiss if I didn't show you some data just to show some of the improvements that we've made. You'll see a slide up there that's a graph which shows our surgery versus intake. If you'll recall, back in two thousand and fifteen, for those of you that were on the commission at that time, we came and proposed doing a free spay and neuter program to any resident of Rutherford County regardless of their income. Our entire goal was to remove any barrier for an animal being spayed and neutered in our county. Of course, that program was self-serving. We wanted to, we knew that was the key to reducing our intake and reducing our euthanasia within the shelter. And if you look at that graph, you can see where in two thousand and twelve, we started with about eight thousand animals, and our surgeries were very limited. But as that surgery line goes up, you can see the intake of our animals have gone down significantly. So we've reduced the number of animals that are coming into the shelter just through that spay and neuter program. And then the thing that we're most proud of is the next slide shows our euthanasia totals, and you can see that sharp drop there in the middle of that graph, and that's when we started doing the surgery programs. Our surgery programs are being very effective at reducing the number of animals that are coming into the shelter and also reducing the euthanasia total. I'm proud of our staff. I'm proud of the work we do. We're not perfect by any means. We're always striving to continue to get better, but these results that you see here within our department are a direct result of the hard work of my staff, and I want to make sure that I tell you all that I appreciate them, but also want to make sure that I tell you that I appreciate you all. You've been very good to our department. When we've come in brought a need to you, you've always taken care of that for us, and I want to thank you for that, because you are part of that and part of these numbers here is your success as well as a commission. So we thank you for that. Be happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Very impressive for me. That down dogs and cats because of like... That today that we do not put down any animals because of like...
Since two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen, we've not put down anything for space. It's been for behavioral reasons or medical reasons. If you go by some industry standards, they would say that is no kill. We don't use that term within our shelter. We use the term low kill, but it's been a direct result because of those surgery numbers. Now, have there been times to where it's been really, really close and we've skirted by? Yes, but it's something that our staff has really tried to maintain. Now, we are a public safety agency. You know, if we go out and we get called tonight and we have to go out and pick up a hundred animals, we may be having to do that in the morning, because again, our goal is public safety and making sure that we're caring for those animals out in the field. But thus far, we've been able to maintain that.
Ever get close, just call Commissioner McMurray. Romell, he'll come by and get some.
I think the shelter is over in his district, so we might get arranged transport, too. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate your work. Next, we have four persons who have signed up for public comments tonight. First on our list is Barbara Donnell. And as Ms. Donnell is coming up, let me remind everyone that you have three minutes, and there's a timer on the podium that you can refer to. And Ms. Donnell's topic is the Rutherford County Bus Contract.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Donnell. My husband, Walter, and I have been in the bus business for ten years. I'm here to discuss the cost of our business versus the pay over our last four-year contract. We have put together a cost analysis, which has been placed on y'all's desk there. The cost of a big bus has increased by fifty-two percent, and a special ed bus, the special ed buses have increased by seventy-seven percent. These increases do not include interest rates, which have also increased. Interest rates have gone from four percent four years ago to nine point five percent financed through a bank. Our other option, if we don't finance through a bank, is find a Mid-South bus service that sells buses will finance buses, but their interest rates start at twelve point five percent. These increases have also extended the amount of time it takes to pay a bus off. We now must finance our buses for seven years instead of five to keep our debt-to-income ratio where it needs to be to qualify for financing. As you can see, labor costs have increased thirty-three percent. Depending on what you're needing repaired, the labor rate could be even more. Parts have increased drastically. Example, a gallon of oil has went from twenty-one dollars to fifty-nine. Another large expense is driver paid, which has gone up thirty-three, thirty-eight percent over the last four-year contract. Now, we're being faced with being required to provide our own liability insurance, a cost that we have never been required to pay. The county has always paid it for us, a cost that could be ten thousand dollars or more per bus per year. Currently, we only are required to pay comp and collision insurance, which runs anywhere from two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars per bus per year. We have shown you our cost analysis over the past four years. During this time, we have received a fourteen percent raise, which is well below the cost of living raise of nine point one percent. You can do the math and see that we are being paid well below what it is costing to maintain our buses, pay our bus payments, pay our drivers, and ourselves, because even though we all love what we do, we need to make a living while doing it. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to our concerns. We appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donnell. Next is Kim Earp. Her topic is also the Rutherford County Bus Contracts.
Hello. My name is Kim Earp, and my husband and I, Kevin, have been in the business since nineteen ninety-five. He's been driving for forty years. I've been driving for twenty-five. I'm here to talk about the contractors' concerns in this upcoming four-year contract. We have a relationship with our students, the parents, and the community. We've carried generations of children in multiple families. We have a community of contractors that work together to make sure each student gets to and from safely, which that's what this county's about. Our current contract is coming to an end in May of two thousand and twenty-five. All the contractors were sent an RFP, where the county is now taking bids for transportation. You also have a copy of that RFP. According to this RFP, a bidder can bid from ten to three hundred and twenty-five contracts, which is the amount of routes currently, which opens the door for large companies to come in and possibly replace us. There are only four contractors in the county that are eligible to even bid in this RFP. We have never received an RFP, and when we are told that we're anticipating a contract will be offered to you, that's causing us some discomfort, uncertainty. We were so thankful, though, that Dr. Sullivan made it crystal clear in the work session at the school board meeting that the county was not replacing current contractors, even though they sent us this RFP. There's over a hundred and seventy individual bus contractors that sign a contract with the county. We're looking forward to negotiating a contract that's going to be beneficial for us and the county. Those other counties that have made decisions to go with the larger companies are now trying to bring back their contractors or buy their own buses back. Large companies cannot give the personal touch that we give to our kids. When large companies or self-owned county buses can't find a driver, they call the parents up and say, hey, we're not running today, so you have to find your own transportation. That never happens in this county, because we help each other out. Whether a driver is sick or the bus is down, the surrounding buses help each other out. This is our business, our livelihood, that we have invested our money, our time, our blood, sweat, and tears. Our investment, however costly it has become, transporting Rutherford County students is what is important to us. I appreciate you giving us the time and listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donnell. Next is Isaiah Heineck. His topic is also the Rutherford County Bus Contracts.
Hello. My name is Isaiah Heineck. I'm a Rutherford County employee. I'm a bus aide currently on a Rutherford County bus. I'm grateful where I grew up, because Rutherford County is where I found my passion to become a school bus contractor, to make a family business for generations to come. It just simply starts out with getting on the school bus for the very first time at five years old. The uniqueness of our Rutherford County buses and only our Rutherford County buses, and how they take pride in their equipment. Rutherford County Bus Contractor Janet Johnson, she made me feel safe while riding her bus, and she inspired me to keep living my lifelong dream. Nick Melhorn, that is a Rutherford County contractor, Lisa Baltimore, inspired him to live his lifelong dream. When they changed the law from age twenty-one to twenty-five to drive a school bus, it threw a wrench in my dream. Contractor Gary Carter took me under his wing to help me fulfill my dream by helping me become an aide and helping him with the buses until I could become a contractor of my own. We have a one-of-a-kind bus community. If I grew up anywhere else, I wouldn't have had the passion for school bus driving that I have. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Last is Steve Noe, and his topic is the Laverne High School.
Mayor Cole could not be here today. He's out of state, trying to make something better for our city. I'd like to thank the Rutherford County Board of Education, your all's committee as far as health and ed, and your committee as far as budget for getting us to tonight. I've been in Laverne for over thirty years. My son graduated. We, like everybody else, we're a growing city. Developers are coming in, buying up property. There's nothing you can do about it. We need this annex, just to give you a little bit of information that I picked up yesterday, was we're one hundred students over in our school. We've got teachers teaching in the basement. We have teachers rolling carts around at the high school, looking for kids to teach. I think we've paid our dues, and Mayor Cole and I actually talked, and I didn't feel like any one of us needed to be here, because I can't imagine any of you, ladies and gentlemen, voting against this, if you know anything about Laverne, but we decided that he would send me and I would try to muddle through this. But we would much appreciate your vote and let's at least get that annex started, because we got some really good things going on in Laverne. I found out Mr. Phillips is a past Lavernean, as we call. So your all's job, at times, like mine, is a thankless job. But when you make the right decisions, it's a very rewarding job. But if you want to get into a job to make everybody happy, I suggest you never get into this kind of environment. But with that, I just want to take one poke at one of your commissioners before I sit down, because that's who I am. And if you know me, I can't believe that you all let Commissioner Wilson come up here without his wife sitting behind him, holding his hand to lead him. So anyway, thank you very much, and please, let's get our high school back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnell. Let me just follow up on that and say I was born and raised in Laverne. It is my hometown, and although I don't reside in Laverne anymore, I still have an older brother who lives in Laverne and would not live anyplace else. It's near and dear to my heart. Thank you, Vice Mayor Noe, for being here and making those comments. Item G, elections and confirmations. We're going to call on our steering vice chair, Commissioner Pettis Reed. You can get, you can do it.
I was told I've got two minutes to do this, then, so everybody hang on. Elections and confirmations. Item one, the election of our notaries. Listing of notaries may be found in your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Mr. Chairman, since I appear on the list, I'd like to abstain.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second to confirm the list of notaries. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item two, steering, we'd like to confirm the reappointment of William Bratcher and Michael Anderson to the Rutherford County Beer Board. This is a three-year term, beginning October twenty twenty-four and continuing to October twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Bratcher and Mr. Anderson to the beer board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item three, steering, we'd like to also confirm Rick Hall to the Juvenile Detention Board of Commissioners to fill the current vacancy. This is a one-year term that will expire August 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Rick Hall to the JDB Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item four, steering wishes to confirm the reappointment of Mark Lee to the Audit Committee as a road board member representative. This is a two-year term, September 24 through September 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Mark Lee to the Audit Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item five, steering also would like to confirm the appointment of Caleb Tibwell to the Audit Committee as a school board member representative. This is also a two-year term, September 2024 through September 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Caleb Tibwell to the Audit Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item six, we also wish to confirm Mike Kush to the Stormwater Advisory Board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second to confirm Commissioner Mike Kush to the Stormwater Advisory Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item seven, steering wishes to confirm Robert Warren to Public Building Authority. Term expires January 2026. This is a mayor appointment. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Mr. Warren to the PBA. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item eight, steering would like to announce one Public Building Authority vacancy. This is a six-year term. Term expires January 2028. This is a mayor appointment. Item nine, steering wishes to announce one Audit Committee vacancy, county citizen member for a four-year term, September 2024 through September 2028. Item ten, steering wishes to announce two Correctional Works Center vacancies. This is a two-year term, January 2025 through January 2027. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmation.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. We'll skip down to item J, public hearings. I'll call on our planning director, Doug Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well today. We have two public hearings for your consideration tonight, one rezoning and one zoning ordinance amendment. We'll go ahead and deal with the zoning request first. This is per property located at sixty-eight thirty-nine Lebanon Pike. The existing zoning is commercial services. Proposed zoning is commercial general on a piece of property about two-thirds of an acre in size. The applicant's asking to rezone this property in order to operate an auto sales lot. This property originally received conditional use permit approval back in 2006 for convenience market, restaurant, and other retail uses. There's a copy of that conditional use permit that has been attached on your iPads with the staff report. Commercial Services zoning was assigned to this property when the new zoning ordinance and map were adopted by the county commission effective January first of 2013. During that time, somewhere around 2013, maybe 2014, the property became a golf cart sales establishment and has been used in that manner since. The applicant would like to discontinue sales of the golf carts and instead sell personal passenger vehicles, just regular cars. Commercial Services does not allow this use, but Commercial General does, so that's why they're asking for this zoning request. You don't see a concept plan submitted with your applicant or with the agenda materials tonight, however, that's because of the fact that they're pretty much just wanting to use it in the manner that it was currently being used right now. Access will be along Lebanon Pike, as it currently is. The applicant is aware that any new improved access points would have to receive TDOT approval, as this is a state/federal road. Any improvements to the site would also have to meet current requirements of the county as well in relation to the access, parking, landscaping, and buffering, and also our performance standards. The planning commissions had some questions regarding the applicant, specifically about the number of cars to be sold on the property. They said anywhere from about fifteen to twenty or so. If repair activities were going to be included, they are not going to be, however, the zoning does allow for that. And if any junk cars would be on the property, the applicant stated there wouldn't be, and the zoning does not allow for that. So following these questions in the public hearing, which nobody spoke, the planning commission did recommend approval of this by a unanimous vote. I will say that most of staff's concerns with this regarding any potential redevelopment of the property, again, having to be done to county standards, mostly related to the frontage of the property. When you look at the aerial photo of this, it's pretty wide open. We'd like to see better access defined in that area should this property redevelop, but also the fact that they need to provide an area for drop-off and pickup of vehicles off of the right-of-way of the 231. So again, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi or staff? Seeing none, I want to declare the public hearing open for rezoning request REZ-24-022 for Mesgen Tavik. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll call the public hearing closed. Commissioner Piercy.
Chairman Phillips, I've had no contact from anyone with any concerns about this. There are car lots in this vicinity. I don't feel like what they're going to do from golf cart sales to car sales will really affect in a great way. I'd like to make the motion to approve this with all staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve rezoning request REZ-24-022. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second public hearing tonight is regarding zoning ordinance amendments for Section 1101-S regarding third-party review of traffic studies. The county recently signed a contract with Neil Schaefer to provide traffic engineering services, including third-party review of traffic studies. This would include participation in traffic scoping meetings, traffic study scoping meetings, and also review of traffic studies submitted for development projects. The zoning ordinance does contain traffic study requirements in Section 1101-S, but lacks any language regarding third-party review. These amendments would add this language and would also clarify that any fees associated with this review would be the responsibility of the applicant/developer. I've included the amendments with your agenda packets. I can go into as much or as little detail as this as you would like me to. You can see, based on what you see on your iPads, anything new is in bold and red. Anything that we're taking out would be struck through. We did explain during the public hearing for this, there were some questions about the timeframe and the costs for this. Staff, we did explain that the timeframe depends on the complexity, but should typically be about two to three weeks after the traffic study is received by our third-party consultant. And again, any cost for that would be borne by the applicant or developer. So since this is a change to the zoning ordinance, we do require a public hearing before the county commission. There was some discussion about this during the Public Works and Planning Committee last week. I was not able to attend. I was out of town for that. But I wanted to just, after listening to the discussion on the county's YouTube page, I did just want to bring up just a few points. The purpose of these amendments, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, is just to allow the county the ability to request the third-party review of these traffic studies with the cost being borne by the applicant. This third-party review does not override any existing authority of either the planning commission or the board of commissioners in their consideration of rezoning requests and/or plat plan review. Now, plat plan reviews, you know, as a function of the planning commission, you'd be looking at it more from the rezoning standpoint, specifically planned developments, as we really can't put those kind of conditions upon just a general rezoning. Furthermore, other organizations, such as the county's highway department and also TDOT, would have input as to whether traffic improvements are required for a particular project, and this is determined on a case-by-case basis. Our regulations on traffic studies, I will say, have not been updated since our regulating documents, meaning our zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations, were adopted back in 2013, following our comprehensive plan and then ordinance updates. We do plan to work with our third-party consultant to craft amendments to these documents to address concerns that were brought up during the meeting last week at the Public Works and Planning Committee. And these amendments also would require planning commission approval, and in the case of the zoning ordinance, would also come back here for your review, just like these are tonight. So I just wanted to make those notes known to you. If you had any questions at this point, I'm happy to take any questions. This did pass through the planning commission with a unanimous vote.
Commissioner Pete.
Well, I was sorry you weren't there. We put a lot off on Danielle that night, but she did a good job. What my main concern was, and you did not address one of the questions I specifically asked, was to question our county attorney, and I hope somebody did talk to Nick about this. What my concern is, is if we require someone to do a traffic study, they have to pay for that out of their pocket. You know, normally, we would be paying for that, and I understand you're trying to save the county money there. My concern is if, and we do this now, there's been occasions where the county commission, me being one of the commissioners that's done it, has overrode what the request was, say, to not have a turning lane. And I made a motion, and it was passed by this body, to put a turn lane in. Now, what I'm wondering from our attorney is if we make it mandatory that they hire somebody to do this, is that going to put us in a bad light if there's litigation, say, if somebody doesn't want to put in a turn lane? You know, my understanding is they can cost anywhere to up to three-hundred thousand, maybe more, depending on the situation. But I don't want to put us in a situation where we're going to be at fault in litigation, and that was my main concern. So if I can get an answer on that. If not, I wasn't expecting this to come tonight without that being answered.
Well, I'll at least address part of it, and then I'll turn it over to Nick to address any other parts. The traffic study, really, it's kind of two components that we're looking at. We're looking at, first of all, the technical aspect of it, which is the big reason we really want their expertise on this, because they can look at the methodologies being used. As good a staff as we have, I like to think in our department, none of us are trained traffic engineers. So there may be nuances in the methodologies and the assumptions that are being made that we may not see nuances, that we may not catch that they would. After that is the regulatory side of things. So regardless of whether or not the traffic study is sound, they have to abide by whatever regulations that we have. This is kind of a roundabout way of answering your question, which is why I go back to what I'd said on my last point, that that is something that we want to look at as far as changing our regulations to update them, you know, especially based on the amount of growth and everything that we're having and whatnot, to better reflect and to accommodate that kind of growth. Now, from a legal standpoint, I'll turn it over to Nick, but I just wanted to at least make that part of it known from the traffic study standpoint, the technical versus the regulatory aspect of things.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment before, so Nick will hear this, too. I understand everything you said sounded really good. However, if I'm doing a traffic study, I'm going to follow the guidelines that are put out there by the state, and they'll say, okay, on the Housiel Pike during this particular area is forty mile-per-hour speed limit. So they're going to do their calculations on that. Is that correct?
I'm not going to pretend to understand how exactly they figure out traffic studies, but they look at various things like road width, road conditions. They do look at speed, right-of-way availability. It's not always the state. If it's not a state road, they wouldn't look at state, you know, horizontal, vertical alignment, things like that.
But they look at specific items, and speed is one of them. On this particular stretch where I asked for a turning lane, the speed limit's forty miles an hour. People typically will run anywhere from fifty to seventy. So they're not taking that into account, but people that live in those areas know, and that's why I say it's important that this body will have a say in those kind of items. Thank you.
So currently, you know, the planning staff doesn't have a consultant like this or an employee like this on staff that has this sort of expertise. We have engineers who certainly are knowledgeable. So as it stands right now, there could be a scenario envisioned where there is a traffic study that is done by the applicant and makes some certain suggestions or recommendations that are not in line with what the governing body wants. And as it stands currently, there's not any sort of competing sort of expert proof that could contravene that. And so this is a tool, I think, for the county to have so that it can challenge or otherwise question the developers' traffic study that is being submitted. And it's good for the governing bodies that would be hearing this because if there's something that the consultant suggests should be done that is more or different than what the applicant's traffic study says, there's now a pretty good firm basis to require it because you have an expert that is your consultant that is saying that this is needed. So that's kind of the first part. It's kind of a double-edged sword, I think, where I'm getting at here because while that's the case, if ultimately the governing bodies can do what they desire. So if the governing body wants to go ahead and require a turn lane that's not necessarily been recommended by the consultant, people can sue for anything, right? And so they may do that. But with that being said, there's also maybe the opportunity for the governing body to request the consultant to look at possible different needs that the body would want and maybe amend or otherwise do a reexamination of the traffic study to see if what the body wants is warranted.
I'm afraid I wouldn't make a good attorney or maybe rebuttal, and not trying to be argumentative here, but I'll give you an example. If you've ever gone out Highway ninety-six, going toward Las Casas out of Murfreesboro, there's a Dollar General there. There was some controversy over whether or not to put a turn lane there, and I wanted a turn lane there. Luckily, in my opinion, that turn lane was put in. Now, currently, there's a large hospital annex being built there. There's a large subdivision built on the Murfreesboro side or the Oakland side of that Dollar General. There's another large subdivision, actually two coming. Two more have been built since. But can any of you that travel that road imagine not having that turn lane on ninety-six that was not required? That's my point about this. You know, a lot of times, you've got to look ahead, and you've got to use some common sense. You can't just look at black and white numbers, and thank you.
Other questions? Another, and I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request for our zoning ordinance amendments. It's R O D R, I'm sorry, O R D two-four dash zero-zero-four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, as the attorney has said here tonight, this is another tool that is basically being placed in the toolbox of the planning commission. It seems like, you know, it used to be when you were on the planning commission, your whole thing you were constantly concerned about was, are you placing property in a flood zone? But now, due to the situation of growth within this county, you have to also look at what the traffic is, that's where the development is happening. This is just another way we look at traffic and what we're having to do, and it's just one thing that the county commission can have here to work with. If you sit here at those two meetings that we have each month, and we have these continually coming towards us, where if we're not looking at a situation where we're changing zoning, we're looking at new plats, we're looking at new situations across this county, and if you'll look at what we're responsible for in the county, this gives these commissioners an opportunity to see something else to help them make those decisions within the county. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this zoning change of this amendment.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Question.
Oliver.
Yes, I'm just really trying to get some clarity between what Commissioner Pete presented and what was responded to by the attorney.
I'm not sure I can add anything to it that makes it more clear, but what's happening right now is that our staff is reviewing those traffic studies and making decisions if they're valid or not. Our staff, the way we've grown, does not have the expertise to go through those in a way that offering the county... a way that, offering the county the full picture of what's going on. This third party would come in and would review the traffic study and also make that decision as to whether or not that turn lane may be warranted, or a turn lane may be warranted. It does not take anything out of the county commission or the planning commission's hands that we don't already have. We still have the flexibility to do that. I think what the attorney was saying in his way is that if the traffic study does not warrant it, then do we still have the flexibility to require a turning lane? In my mind, the answer is yes. The answer was that it may create an adversarial situation that we could be sued. But don't be afraid of being sued because we're sued on a regular basis. All this thing does is give us an additional tool. And let me just say that this third party will not only look at what's happening right now at that particular development, but will also look at the impact of what's happening down the road in the future. And that's maybe one thing that a traffic study would not allow. I'm not sure I stated that exactly right, but it doesn't change the Planning Commission or the county commission's ability to require.
Again, try not to be argumentative, just to drive this point home. Rockvale School, there's a ton of traffic, there's lots of problems. The problem, from what I've heard, part of it is what's caused upstream, a mile or two ahead, which has caused a lot of this backup. A good traffic study may have taken care of that in the past, come up with alternatives. I'm not saying we don't need these tools. I'm saying we need to be more explicit about how we do this. Now, if we just say, we're going to require this, and we're going to take into consideration whatever this third party that is hired to do the traffic study and says, okay, if they said it's required, we do it; if they say it's not required, we don't. We need to have verbiage in this that states that the commission and/or the Planning Commission has the authority to override, even though it's required, those traffic studies. That's what I'm asking for. I don't know if I could offer an amendment to this, or I personally would rather it go back to planning and let them come up with some verbiage that would allow that.
But let me answer that this way. When we came up with these amendments, the only thing we wanted to do was put the ability to, for us to request that third-party review in here. We know there's other amendments that have to be made. I'd prefer to keep them separate. That way, we're concentrating on at least getting to the point where if a developer comes in, we can go ahead and have them do that third-party study and then work on everything else that we know needs to be updated. So that's why we just brought what we did tonight. When our traffic actually looked at this, they made several other changes that we didn't bring, and I don't remember exactly what those were, but, because I wasn't trying to complicate the issue. So this has just given us the ability to at least require the studies at this point, or require the third-party review, I should say. We have the ability to require studies as it is, it's just this is the third-party review for somebody that look at it that's got more expertise in the field than we do. So that was the only purpose for this. And then knowing full well that we would come back in the future with changes to the regulations to update them, to be more responsive to what we're currently dealing with. That's the best way I can answer that.
Chairman.
Sorry, Commissioner Piercey.
I've got a question for Doug. Do you have stipulations you go by in your department that you'd say, yes, this warrants a turning lane, no, it does not?
Not for turning lanes specifically. Now, we do for traffic studies, but that, again, that gets back to the whole discussion we're having as far as, do our regulations need to be updated to reflect some of those things? Yes, I think they do. And that's part of what we want to use their expertise, is to help us make some changes.
There's nothing based on size, house count?
Nothing like that. Now, there are, and again, I'm speaking as not a traffic engineer, so forgive me, but there are standards, like the Institute of Traffic Engineers, I T E manuals, that are followed by traffic engineers that do make those kind of recommendations, and those are the documents that they rely on for those. And I think, not looking at the text of the entire ordinance in front of me, I want to say that there is mention of those documents in that section, but, you know, there's nothing in there that specifically says X amount of houses needs X amount of, means X amount of cars, which is X amount of, you know, traffic improvements. It could be a turn lane here, it could be something further down the road, it could be something other than just turn lanes. I mean, we talk about turn lanes as one of the primary things for traffic improvements, but it could be a wider shoulder. It could be, you know, a wider lane of travel through an area. It doesn't just have to be a turn lane. So we're talking multiple things that they're looking at here, not just whether or not a turn lane's required or not.
These regulations I've, the guidelines I've asked you about, is that something you'd be willing to look at and put in to what you go by?
That's something, like I said, that's something we want to update our ordinances on, is for those kind of things. Now, whether or not that means we get as specific as that, or we just rely on those documents that are already out there that stipulate those kind of things, it might be easier just to do that. That way, we don't have to change the ordinance every time something changes that the consultants are looking at, or engineers or traffic engineers are looking at to make those determinations. It might be easier just to denote the source. We do that in other areas of the ordinance as well.
Right. Look, myself, I have concerns like Mr. P does, because we both have rural districts, and we're getting heavy development in our rural districts. I would be interested in you looking into the point, the fact that if a development has X amount of houses, require a turning lane on a rural road, because in the future coming, and that's something we've got to look at, is down the road, not just today, what a study sets there and counts and looks at. We've got to look down the road, because most of the county where it's possible is going to develop. Just because you put a subdivision right here on a rural road, don't mean there's not going to be one on each corner of that road. And I think it would be simpler just to change the regulation on development, let the developer pay for the turning lane when they develop the property, and not push it over on the county taxpayers somewhere down the road when we see, oops, hey, we're having too many wrecks here, we need to widen a shoulder, we need to widen a road, in which I understand your third party can tell you that. But I like, Mr. P, I would like to keep that in concrete somehow, that we can force them to put a turning lane in if they're going to develop for homes.
Right. And I understand what you're saying, and like I said, you know, it'd be a review of the entire ordinance that we'd be looking at.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve zoning ordinance amendment, O R D 24-004. Hallows in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item K, we're getting into our standing reports. I'm sorry. Mr. Demasi has a handout and would like to make a comment on it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and apologize for indulging me for just a couple of minutes. I laid on your tables, this is a portion of the draft from Plan Rutherford. It's got the three different primary character areas identified in the plan. You see the county suburban, you'll see county rural living, and also rural preserve. There's also a, if you need it, we can put it on the big screen as well. They have it. If we need to put it up there, just let me know. We can certainly do that. I figured it'd be a little easier to have it in front of you than trying to squint to read the writing on the big screen. As you're aware, we recently had our town hall meeting presenting the first draft of Plan Rutherford that was held October 24th, and that was at Lane Agri Park. It was very well attended. I was very happy to see a number of people that were there, and I saw several of you out there as well, so I really appreciate that, that you were there. This draft is also on Plan Rutherford's website. I'll be forwarding you that link, so you can take that, look at that at your leisure. But I did want to give you some comments on this as we move forward with the adoption process. The first thing I want to just make sure everybody's aware of, that the document that you see on the website, and even what you have on your tables right there, is just that, it is a draft. This is not a finalized document at this point. What you are being presented with today, and also what you see on the website, are just recommendations. The door is not closed on further comments or input. We fully anticipate that there are going to be additional comments, there'll probably be compromises on certain issues, those kind of things. We expect that. And as it works its way through the adoption process, we look forward to hearing those comments that we're receiving, already receiving, from members of the public. One example, we've received several comments regarding affordable housing. I think everyone here recognizes that affordable housing is an issue in Rutherford County. The plan does recognize this as well. However, this is not going to be an issue that can be solved within our jurisdictions, excuse me, alone. This is going to be something that's a more county-wide approach. The municipalities will also have to part to play in this as well. Regarding the adoption process, I will say, I want to speak to that for just a minute. The public hearings that we will have on this are going to have to be advertised at least 30 days in advance prior to the adoption of any plan, be it either at the Planning Commission or at this level here at the County Commission. You can find that in the TCA. This includes, again, any meetings at all that we have before the Plan Commission or Board of Commissioners. Further input from those meetings is going to help us even refine the draft further. And we'll be in discussions amongst ourselves at the Planning Commission and staff to determine the timeline of these meetings. We anticipate these beginning after the first of the year, sometime probably early 2025. And this, I think, is the most important, I want to make sure everybody realizes, even if the plan is adopted, adoption of the plan does not automatically change any of the zoning in the county. Zoning will remain the same, any of the processes that we have, everything still is the same. Example, when we adopted our current comprehensive plan back in 2011, we followed that up immediately with overhauls to both our zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations. Those weren't completed until 2013. The adoption of the zoning took effect January 1st of 2013. The subdivision regulations were several months beyond that. Both of those updates had several meetings. I remember having neighborhood meetings, especially about the zoning, where we went out to the community, kind of did the quadrant approach, broke the county down into four parts, and had meetings in all sectors, just to kind of show people what it was that we were doing. Above all, if you have questions on this after looking at the draft, or if you have constituents that call you and have questions about it, feel free to have them call our office. That's what we're there for. We're more than happy to talk to them and to get any comments on this. Or if you have questions about this yourselves after looking at some of the items on the draft, feel free to call me. Come to the office, we'll have a meeting, we can sit down with the document and kind of go through it. So I just wanted to, at least just giving updates to where things are right now. And at this point, that's really all I had. I'll be happy to answer questions, everybody has them.
Mine's not a question, I just want to remind the commissioners that if you want to look at this plan all in detail, go to planrutherford.org. Do not go to .com, because you'll find all kinds of recipes that you've never seen before.
And I will send that link out to you all. I was checking my email earlier, I thought I had, but I didn't do that.
Go to .org, planrutherford.org. I have been on this site all day. I'm sort of one of these individuals, I can look at it on the computer and go through that away, but I have printed mine off. I've got it right here. It contains 87 pages, and it gives the entire information, a lot of information. And you've got to remember, we've been at this over two years in what we're trying to put in here. A lot of maps, a lot of information, a lot of things about the traffic of Rutherford County, a lot of things about the type of soil we have, a lot of, a whole lot of information about Rutherford County, I think you would enjoy just going in there and looking at. But please go in there, go through it, turn the pages, just like you're looking at a magazine. And if you do have questions, just as Doug had, call the office, or if you want to, call our committee that has worked on this. I served as vice chairman, Rhonda Allen was chairman. We've had other individuals that are on that as well. Mark Lee, many of you know Mark. Mark has served on that committee. Warren Russell. Warren was a member of the City of Murfreesboro's Planning Commission. He was on there. John Lodal was on that committee. We've had a lot of individuals that served on that committee who have done an excellent job of keeping us with information and things. So give us a call, we'll be glad to also answer any question you might have about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, and I have nothing further other than to say, I probably won't see most of you prior to the holiday, so I hope you all have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
I had myself a little bit earlier, we need to go back to our agenda.
I have reviewed the consent agenda, find everything to be appropriate. Motion to move to...
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Questions?
I don't, I don't want to pull anything off the consent agenda, but I want to bring item 13 to everybody's attention. If you haven't noticed that, basically what that is, is money from a state grant. This is a new state grant, which is a voucher for retaining SRO officers. And basically what it does is add $800 to their salary. Now, that's one thing, I just wanted people to know that the state had done that for our officers, and, you know, if we pass this agenda here, then that will go to them. The other thing I wanted to note, since this did not go to public safety, it came directly to budget. Contacted Chairman Reed just to make sure that he knew about that. But basically, we've run into this problem in the past, we explained it the other night in Budget, if you watched it. We will get grants sometimes with deadlines that prevent us from going through our committee process. In this case, had we not moved this forward here, these officers would not be able to get this $800 that I think is, you know, very well needed and would be a good thing for us. But I just wanted people to know, I'm not into bypassing our committee process, but there are times when we run into problems where there are deadlines that we can't, that are imposed on us, and therefore, we don't go through our committee process at times. Anyway, those two things are the points I wanted to make, but thank you.
Other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Question.
Oliver.
And I know that that can occur at times, and it has happened. I'm just curious as to what kind of policy we're going to put in place to say, hey, it's okay if this. Whereas sometimes when certain things usurp the committee process, then it's a challenge. So we need to look at some type of consistent protocol or policy where we say, yay, let's do this. You know what I mean? To be consistent across the board. Because there have been times when we've been here arguing because someone didn't follow the committee process. So just wanted to put that out there.
I think that's the exact point that Commissioner P was bringing up. There are certain situations that are budget items that have time restrictions, and the committee process is already passed. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen occasionally. And I'm not 100% sure that there's something we can put in place, but we'll have that discussion with our legal department and with our chairman of our steering committee to see if there's something that can be done. A good point. Commissioner P.
One thing we mentioned the other night, and Michael, you can expound on this, let me just let Michael tell our end of it.
So to answer Commissioner Oliver's question, one of the things that the chairman of budget and then my office has put in place is, almost 99.9% of these are grants, and we go by the grant deadline. So in this case, for SRO, it was due on December 2nd, and we just got it the Monday of the budget, Monday or Tuesday of the budget week. So typically, that's our rule of thumb. If the dates allow it to go through the committee process, then it goes through the committee process. The only time we've put it straight to the budget agenda is if the grant date set by whoever the grant agency is, whether that be the state or federal government or somebody like that. That's been the only time that I'm aware of that we've requested to bypass the committee process. And so that's kind of been our hard and fast rule, as far as from my office and as far as from the chairman of budget. Like I said, in this case, it was December 2nd was the deadline, and so we couldn't meet the next commission meeting, which would have been after December 2nd, and we didn't want the grant to go, because it's a no-match. But that's been our rule, a pretty hard rule. Looking at the chairman, I don't think we violated that. If we have, it's been so rare that I can't remember it, but generally, it's the grant deadline that we go by.
We really don't take excuses. I forgot is not an excuse. You're basically going to miss out on a grant if you come up with something like that. You know, when we have the deadline imposed, and it's a problem, that's why I brought it up at Budget the other night. I want you aware that I'm not trying to bypass any of our committees, and as our chairman, Chairman Phillips said, you know, that's something that we need to work on, and we're aware it's a problem, and I want all of us to be aware that we're working on it.
Let me just compliment our budget department. Let me just compliment our budget department, that Chairman P. has been on budget for a number of years, and has been chairman of that committee for a number of years. And there's not been a single solitary situation that has arisen like this where he has not communicated with the chairman of that standing committee about what's happening. So we've kind of brought them up to date before budget meets. So there is some communication. Maybe we can put something in place that would maybe even put a policy in place that would be in writing instead of something that was understood. Take a look at that. Chairman Harris and our legal department will take... Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. For this, we'll be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Now we'll get into our standing committee reports. Under item K1, Budget Finance and Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P.
Okay, our first item is Budget, item A. And this is, this came to us from our circuit court judges. They're having a problem in the courtrooms with the jurors being able to hear and be heard. And that could actually cause some problems down the line if somebody wanted a retrial for whatever reason. But they've requested money for data equipment and basically more microphones or speakers. So I'll go ahead and read this. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Office of Information Technology, decrease in unassigned fund balance of $12,000 and increasing expenditures of data equipment, $12,000. Resolve this 14th day of November 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. And a second. Questions or comments? Have a motion and a second to approve item K1A. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Item K1A passes. Mr. P.
Budget item B. This is, well, I'll go ahead and read it. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the drug fund be amended as follows. Drug enforcement, a decrease in restricted fund balance, $190,000. Increase expenditures M&amp;R building, $65,000, and building improvements, $125,000. Resolve this 14th day of November 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? And we'll be on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Item K1C passes. Chairman P.
Okay, Budget item C, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment. This is, this would allow the school board to purchase radios and related equipment. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 14th day of November 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move. You'll see attachment, or you should have it, on this is actually for $2,015,000.
Have a motion and a second.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Item K1C passes. Chairman P.
This is Budget item D. This is a long-awaited funding for a Laverne Annex. Whereas there is a need to plan, design, construct, and furnish an annex at Laverne High School project due to the growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funding of the project at the estimated cost of $43,930,000. Whereas the funds in the amount of $2,500,000 were approved and funded in February of 2024 for design of the project, and the funds in the amount of $41,430,000 will be funded from a future bond issue for construction, construction-related contracts and furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the project. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funding for the construction, construction-related contracts and furniture, fixture, and equipment for the project in the amount of $41,430,000 be authorized from a future bond issue. Resolve this 14th day of November 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move. And that, and that bond issue will be in the spring.
Have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Vote, for this will be on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
18 yes, one abstain.
Item K1D passes. Congratulations.
Next is Budget, item E. And if you've looked, there's 20-something pages here for me to read, but actually, I'm not going to read any of that. I'm going to turn it over to Michael. But this is a requirement from the state of Tennessee that this is presented to this body. And Michael, if you want to explain this, this is on a, well, I'll let you.
So I'm going to explain item E and go ahead and talk a little bit about item F because they're directly related. So one of the things that we proposed at the Budget Committee is to do a refunding. We've done one of those, we did one of those last year that saved us quite a bit of money. And so part of doing a refunding or a refinancing is, we have to submit a plan to the Comptroller's Office first, make sure that's approved, and in this case, it was. That plan and letter from the Comptroller's Office is then required to be presented to the legislative body and posted on our website, which it is. And so you'll see that before you tonight. So that's why item E is first, and then item F is the actual resolution to approve the refunding. Now, there is something unique about this refunding that is different from the one we did last time, and so I'll tell a little bit about that. So a refunding, we're refunding some bond issues from 2015, and in this case, our bonds are callable in usually in 10 years, our 20-year bonds are callable in 10 years. So in this case, they'll be callable in April of 2025. And so we'd like to go ahead and call some of those bonds, but we'd like to go ahead and call seven years' worth of those. And we'd actually like, the unique part about this one that's different from the last time is we'd actually like to call the last three years of those and pay those off. And so what the anticipated savings of these are, is the first seven years of the refunding, the anticipated savings is going to be between $700,000 and $800,000 in total, about $100,000 a year. And so we're excited about that. But when we combine it with the debt service payoff of those last three maturity years, our savings jumps to between $2 and $3 million in total. And so that gets, that entire bond would come off our books that much sooner. And so in total, this refunding would save us projected between $2 and $3 million. Now, I'll tell you the reason there's such a range there, is we don't know what our interest rates are going to be when we actually go to the bond market. You know, we, we give a conservative estimate, so we hope that it's a tad better than that. We hope it's closer to the $3 million. But, you know, we will take any savings we could get on these refundings, and $2 to $3 million worth of savings is, that's real savings that, that we can put towards projects like this Laverne High School addition. So in a nutshell, that, that is what items E and F are. Like I said, item F, you will see a little bit different language that'll allow us to spend up to $10 million to call those bonds in April. We don't anticipate it being that much, but we wanted the flexibility based on rates to be able to save that, that money come April.
Mr. Chairman, that, of course, is just a presentation, so we don't need to vote on item E. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead and move to item F unless we get...
If we could take a vote on E to make, this is required, and that way it puts it in stone that we presented it, since it's been required, or if we want to put it in the minutes, it just has to be one, somewhere set in stone that we do that.
I move that we approve the presentation from the Comptroller's Office on the refunding.
Have a motion and a second.
Not for, not for E.
Okay. All those in favor of item K1E, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. Chairman P.
Item F, a resolution to issue general obligation refunding bonds and authorization to use debt service fund monies to redeem outstanding general obligation bonds. And I'm not going to read all 20 pages there. I will ask Nick if I don't get enough in there to, let me know if I need to add anything to this. A resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, in one or more series, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, principal and if any, an interest on the bonds, and authorizing the use of the county debt service fund monies to redeem outstanding general obligation bonds of the county. Resolve this 14th day of November 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Being none, for this will be on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Item K1F passes. Chairman P.
Mr. Chairman, our next regular meeting will be Thursday, December the 5th. I think that printout you got says the 12th, but I believe that somebody, I stand to be corrected, but I believe that's the date of the next full commission meeting. So our next meeting will be the 12th. Thank you, that concludes our business today.
You are correct, the next scheduled budget meeting is December the 5th. Thank you for catching that. Item K2, Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have a report this evening, but our next meeting will be Monday night, November the 25th at 5:30 here in this room.
Thank you, Chairman. You'll also notice that that's a change over the regular meeting week. Item K3, Health and Education Committee, call on the vice chair of that, Phil Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November 26th at 5:30. There is no report tonight, but I would like to offer a couple of comments. We had the public comments tonight on the bus contractors, and I had a great discussion with them before tonight's meeting. Just want to offer a couple of comments to all the commissioners. I had reached out to the Board of Education just to ask questions about what exactly is going on and what has caused the questions. So I just wanted to share some of that information with all the commissioners. The RFP sent out, was apparently sent out because we are having some routes that had to been doubled up by current drivers, because we obviously have more students needing routes. So the RFP process at this time is something new and different than has been seen because they were actually looking for proposal for additional people to solve a problem they're having now. So of course, that's very uncomfortable, and understandably so, with bus contractors that are looking at a season of renegotiating a contract. So I reached out and said, can you tell me a little bit more about the RFP? Because it's making our current contractors feel a little uncomfortable, which is to me very understandable. And this was the answer that have actually probably been given to several commissioners. And I know several of you have also probably spoke with the bus contractors, but this came from the Board of Education. The RFP is not to replace the anticipated contract with individual contractors. The RFP is supplemental to the current operations and will require a minimum number of routes. This would be in addition to the routes a current contractor already provides for RCS. And this is where the minimum number of buses required to make a bid is 10 for a 90-passenger bus and five for the smaller special education buses. And this is a very important keynote. The RFP was written this way to protect contractors with only a few buses from being replaced. And I think one of the things we heard tonight was the fear of an RFP going out, of there being a bidding process to replace smaller individual contractors. That is not the official position the Board of Education said, that the RFP was simply sent out to solve the current problem, to get bids back. And understandably so, I mentioned to the contractors, there is a pre-bid meeting on November 19th at 10 a.m. So any questions that anyone has, commissioners, anyone that would like to bid, just like we do in our own RFP process, those questions will be answered to make sure that anyone wants to make a bid has clear answers to what the RFP says. So there's plenty of time to work that out. And once again, that's November 19th at 10 a.m. at the Board of Education. So just wanted to keep you guys posted on, you know, where we are on that process. That's created a little bit of the conversations, leading into the fact that the new contract will be, it will be negotiated by May. And of course, that will come, if there's an increase requested, we'll be seeing that through our Health and Ed and Budget Committees when they present that in May. So hopefully that clears up a little bit of the questions about what's going on. Reach out to the Board of Education if you have any other questions, or please feel free, if you have an informational question, I'm happy to explain what I heard from them, and we can make sure all commissioners have all the information you need. Thank you, Chairman.
You, appreciate you.
Chairman Phillips.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Piercey.
Not to dispute anything he said, but my family, my family's been in the bus business for over 60 years. On a list, there was a A-list, a B-list of contractors that wanted those routes. If there was nobody on the A or B list, it went to an all call. The call went out to every driver, every contractor in the county, or every driver that had driven a consecutive two years that qualified for a route for their own. Now, we sat here not too long ago, and I believe it was the director of the schools, could have been Mr. Lee, made the comment, they were going to put the RFP out so they would have tools to work with. I feel like there's a lot more to the RFP for full transportation of all county school students, other than just simply... students, other than just simply, we're trying to fill a few routes we've got now that nobody can take, or one bus is running two routes. Now, it is an issue, but let me tell you something. We bought bus after bus. The numbers they put on this paper here tonight for a bus, that's almost a bus with no wheels and tires on it. If you get a bus that's good enough to last you 15 to 18 years, which that's what it takes, limit that the state will let you run a bus unless you can qualify for maybe 19. It's very unlikely that happens. What they've been paid over the years has not kept up with the cost of operating and owning your own bus. When you start giving $160,000 to $180,000 based on a $7,000 check, you're hiring a driver for $23,000 to $3,000 a month. It don't work on paper. These people will probably be forced to quit if the school board cannot find some way to give them a sizable raise, because the raises that they've had in the last 15 to 20 years not kept up with the increase of expense they're having. I know I quit. It wasn't worth it. I was either going to buy a new bus or retire from the bus business. I opt to retire because the numbers don't work at the pay they make today. I know we have no say-so in how the school spends their budget money that we give them. It's all up to them. But great effort for those drivers to come in here tonight and speak on behalf of 300-plus drivers, I think they said 170, 180 contractors. I applaud them for having the nerve to come and speak in front of us, probably knowing it wouldn't do any good, but they were willing to try anyway. Thank you.
Piercy, and thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for your comments and filling in tonight. Good job. Thank you. Item four, Property Management Committee. Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting is Thursday, November the 21st at 5:30 p.m., and we have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Item K5, Public Works and Planning Committee. Chairman, Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works and Planning does not have a report tonight. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, December 3rd at 5:30.
Any comments on Commissioner Johnson's report? Or anything else about Commissioner Johnson? Man has a lot of guts. You look good. Item K6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Chairman, we don't have a report. Our next meeting is December 2nd.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. That moves us to the end of our agenda and under other business. Let me go ahead and say, our next commission meeting will be December the 12th. We skip over it a bunch, but anybody know where all of our treats come from every month and every committee meeting? In case you didn't, Commissioner Sereno is the, is the individual who gives us the opportunity when we go late into the night to make it through those late meetings. So a shout out to Willie Wonka. So a shout out to Commissioner Sereno once again. Thank you. Appreciate you. Anything else? Anybody have any shout outs that we need to go through tonight? Commissioner McMurray.
Chairman, I have a shout out. Can you hear me?
You're on.
I would like to give a shout out to Slick Pig for providing us our dinner for tonight. So feel free to be sure to grab you a plate on the way out. I will say that Commissioner Gooch here already said he's going to take the wing. So if you notice the first four letters in it, it's home. So get you some wings before he takes them with him. But thank you to Slick Pig and happy Thanksgiving to you all.
I think Commissioner Gooch, the statement was that Commissioner Gooch, which is now affectionately called Eureka Gooch, didn't get enough last year, so he's eating enough this year to last him till next year. So, good job. Shout outs. Anything else?
Commissioner, I mean Chairman. I want to shout out our, well, I guess Director Clark and all of our emergency management directors and professionals who assisted with the storm damage in East Tennessee, and they're still needing our prayers and our support. But I wanted to shout out those emergency professionals for their hard work in being able to be dispatched to assist those citizens.
Thank you. We can't say thank you enough to those individuals, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Oliver. I'd like to just make one little brief, and then we'll get out of here. We're entering a time of Thanksgiving, and we're all thankful for families, we're thankful for friends, we're thankful for the freedoms that we have. But us, as government officials, I'd just like for us to be thankful for the people who run our departments and the job that they do and the sacrifices they make to make this county what it is. And think about those individuals that make our county what it is, from the mayor's office to the clerk's office. Thank you for the job that you do, and it's the appropriate time of the year for us to thank those individuals. They are dedicated public servants, and we appreciate them and what they do. Thank you. Anything else? I appreciate you. Thank you for your patience, your participation tonight. Happy Thanksgiving. We are adjourned.